Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Righty. First item on the agenda is public comments. Does anybody have any public comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on to review and approval of minutes. The agenda says the four nine minutes, but we also have the March nineteenth minutes. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the planning board minutes of March nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, with adjustments if necessary, or corrections if necessary.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Awesome. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion.
I'll abstain. I didn't have a chance to review them.
Okay.
Motion to approve the planning board minutes of April nineteen, ninth, rather, April ninth of two thousand thirteen, with corrections if necessary.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think I have one thing on page four, line twelve, the very end of the line, letter and he. I think it should be letter and she.
Thank you.
Anything else, Rick?
That's it that I have.
Does anybody else have anything?
Well, wait, no, because it was Eric that was comfortable with Diane's response on that line.
Look like.
Diane Hardy did respond to Ms. Thompson's letter, and he was very comfortable with her responses.
Yeah, Eric Bodeman.
Eric is the one that commented, and he was comfortable with Diane's responses. So that's correct as it is written.
He did receive the letter, isn't he? He told us several concerns relative to the vote. Diane Hardy said to respond to Mrs. Anne.
But she was very comfortable.
She was.
You should be she, not he.
All right, he was. All right, I redraw my.
I think maybe the modification for clarification would be Anne Chairman Bodeman was very comfortable with Diane Hardy's responses.
Okay, because as it's written, it does refer to Diane.
Correct.
Can I make a?
Yes, very good. Thank you, Val.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
I'll.
Elizabeth.
Hi.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda is continuation of the New Market Mills public hearing. I understand, Diane, that we have a letter requesting a continuance.
We have a request for a continuation. However, Mr. Asia is here, and I didn't know if maybe he wanted to give the board a quick update on where we are with things, if he'd like.
Feel free.
I'm Matt Asia with Chimburg Properties. We met with the TRC on May second and received a fair number of comments that we're responding to, which is why we requested the continuation till the June eleventh hearing. Matthew, I'll stand. You think we should raise?
Just, we had a meeting today with the library trustees. If you recall, that was one of the requests of the TRC, was that Chimburg builders get together with the library trustees and try to work out their concerns. And I got this sense it was a very positive meeting, and there was a revision to the plan, and they seemed very receptive. They had some suggestions on additional signage to clarify where the municipal spaces are. And under the new plan, there's going to be some additional parking set aside for the library use, two spaces to make up the deficiency that goes along with reconfiguring it so it's a safer configuration. And they seemed responsive.
I would agree.
So the ultimate, the outcome will be that the library trustees and the developer will be in front of the council, saying they've agreed on a parking configuration for the library. That's correct?
That's hopefully what will happen the next, you know, thirty days.
Okay. Excellent. All right, so we have a request to continue to June eleventh.
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for an application for major site plan review requested by New Market Mills LLC at Main Street, Tax Map U2, Lot sixty-eight and sixty-one, for the proposal to construct a single-story, ninety-six-hundred square-foot commercial building near Spring Street at the west end of the New Market Mills parking lot. Structural house various businesses, including a small grocery, restaurant, and retail shops.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, two. Can I just amend that to the date of?
June eleventh.
June eleventh.
You want to read?
Seconding, ma'am.
Seconding.
Seconding.
Okay. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so if that continued. Oh, for the record, too, Janice Rosa will be here about seven-thirty or so. She has a Veterans Committee meeting starting at seven o'clock. The second, or the next item on the agenda is for basically a lot line adjustment for New Market Mills LLC. Steve, are you going to go through that?
No, I'm not here for that presentation.
Matt.
Matt, oh, okay, yep.
As the board will recall, we were in front of the board for the approval of the conversion of the Riverdale Garage to a restaurant. And as part of that, the lot line, requesting adjustment of the lot line, as shown on this plan, lot line would be increased, would be moved towards the south here and towards the west here. These three parcels are owned by New Market Mills.
And the adjustment is to make that building conforming with the current zoning?
Correct. Current zoning and the proposed M-one zoning.
M-two.
M-two, excuse me, M-two zoning.
Sorry.
Oh, thanks.
All right. Has everybody had a chance to review the information we were provided? And does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Will that give you any more parking at all, or take away parking?
No, it doesn't impact parking at all.
Okay.
So is that just currently a landscape buffer from between the parking?
Correct.
Development and Riverdale?
Existing now is landscaping here, landscaping here. The lot line adjustment takes the lot line from the landscape area to the edge of the curbing approximately on this lot, and similarly along this lot as well.
Are there any buffer requirements in the regulation relative to the previous approval? That we could have to waive or anything like that?
We, no. We approved the landscaping plan.
Mm-hmm.
There's no buffer requirements for B-one district.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
There's a question, but not really related. I was just, there's a question last on the ADA parking. Have we gotten that back from?
I reviewed it with the, someone from the Governor's Commission on Disability.
They have a technical service where you can call and they'll review questions. And it was presented that it's really not an ideal situation, but because there's such low volume of traffic going into that driveway, that if there was a sign or a crosswalk that would clarify that that's really not an area where people are supposed to park, that they were satisfied with the change. And I did convey that to Chairman Bodeman and to the applicant. So I think we've covered that requirement.
I think the plan here even reflects the crosswalk.
The crosswalk. But we would like to see a sign to warn anyone who wants to park there that that's not a parking area.
Okay, what I'd like to do is, if the board agrees, is have a motion to accept the application as complete. And then if we go to get to that point, then we will open the public hearing. So.
Eric, I didn't hear you.
I'd like to open, I'd like to have us accept the application as complete if everybody's comfortable with it. And then if we get to that point, if we do that, then we will, then I'll open up the public hearing.
For the lot line adjustment?
For the lot line adjustment.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion? That we accept the application?
Make a motion to accept the application for a lot line adjustment requested by New Market Mills LLC at Main Street, Tax Map U2, Lot fifty-six C, fifty-seven, and sixty-one. The proposal is to decrease Lot fifty-six C by a total of nine hundred and forty-four square feet by adding three hundred and thirty-eight square feet to Lot sixty-one and six hundred and six square feet to Lot fifty-seven. Also, sixteen hundred and seventeen square feet will be taken from Lot sixty-one and added to Lot fifty-seven. The zone is currently B-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, so we've accepted the application as complete. Now, at this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who has any comments relative to this lot line adjustment plan? All right, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. And Diane's memo references a waiver request. I'd like to go through the waivers.
Make a motion that we waive Section 4.10B to soils mapping.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, at this point, if anybody has any comments or discussions, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application.
I think Diane had one change.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to see the actual B-one setback shown on the second plan, which shows the positioning of the building with respect to the property lines, just so that it's clear in the future what setback we're referring to.
Right. I'd just as soon see that in, in the motion?
Motion, okay. I'll make a motion to accept the application for major site plan from the New Market Mills LLC property at Main Street, Tax Map U2, Lot sixty-eight and sixty-one in the B-one zone, to construct a single-story, ninety-six-hundred square-foot commercial building near Spring Street.
Wrong one.
On the wrong one, Diane?
Yep.
Sorry.
You want to be on page, the top of page three.
I'm getting two. That's where I am.
The very top.
Sorry, sorry, let me rephrase this. Back up, take that out of the minutes. Making a motion to approve the New Market Mills LLC application for a lot line adjustment at Main Street, Tax Map U2, Lots fifty-six C, fifty-seven, and sixty-one, for the proposal to decrease Lot fifty-six C by a total of nine hundred and forty-four square feet by adding three hundred and thirty-eight square feet to Lot sixty-one and six hundred and six square feet to Lot fifty-seven. Also, one thousand six hundred and seventeen square feet will be taken from Lot sixty-one and add to Lot fifty-seven, subject to the condition that the required side and rear setbacks be added to Sheet Two of Two, showing the building conforms to both the setback requirements for the M-two and the B-one zoning district.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, next on the agenda is the Vida Family Real Estate Trust, Kathleen Zocke and Carl Vida, trustees in the town of New Market, public hearing for an application for a lot line adjustment at eighteen Lamprey River Park, Inherent Point, Tax Map R2, Lots eighty-six, eighteen, and one nineteen, the R2 zone. Proposal is for an equal land swap of a fifty-by-one-hundred-foot area. I'd like to, before we start there, just, has everybody had a chance to review the information provided?
I'll recuse myself. I'm going to butter to the property.
Oh, okay.
I'm working with the family.
Okay. And I guess for the record, I have to say that my company did some work for the Vitas last year. It was some locating utilities or whatnot. I'm not going to recuse myself because I don't think it has any impact on this here. It was no boundary survey or anything like that, so. But I do have a prior relationship with the family. Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Need to appoint Jane?
We do, yes. Thank you, Mr. McMenman. She's our alternate for tonight.
You're our alternate for tonight?
Well, she's our alternate always, but she's our non-alternate for tonight.
Our voting alternate for tonight.
Exactly. Our voting member for tonight.
Okay, so I believe that we should first accept the application if we think it's complete. Diane's memo indicated that it was. So unless anybody has any opinions to the contrary, I'd like to get a motion to accept the application as complete.
Motion to accept the application for a lot line adjuster requested by the Waja Family Real Estate Trust, Kathleen A. Zocke and Carl M. Waja, trustees in the town of New Market at eighteen Lamprey River Park, Inherent Point, Tax Map R2, Lot eighty-six dash eighteen, and one nineteen, R2 zone. The proposal is for an equal area land swap of fifty-by-one-hundred foot.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Well, I just have a quick, sort of obvious discussion, which Drew is in favor of it as a, in terms of the Conservation Commission. So I guess that means, from, my question would be, how disturbed is the land on Lot A currently in terms of?
Oh, I think your question's a little premature. We need to accept the application first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we just did that.
And then we're going to open the public hearing and all that. No.
I thought we just did that.
No, we're in the process of that. That's fine, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Motion's made and seconded, so any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving, of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Okay. We will now open up the public hearing. You have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Steve Micho from Doucet Survey, representing Vida Family Real Estate Trust. Our objective this evening was primarily application acceptance. And beyond that, Diane has enumerated a number of concerns in her memo. And these are issues that will need to be taken up between the Vitas attorney and the Towns Council, I believe. And because of those issues, we would request a continuance. I suppose continuance request till the next meeting would be appropriate. However, depending on the complexity of the issues that come back to us, it may end up being July before we're ready to be heard. But we would certainly let the Planning Department know in advance of the June meeting if that's the case.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
With the issues that Diane brought up, is there general consensus that everybody's going to work together to resolve those, or to the best of your ability?
That's my understanding at this point.
That's your understanding?
It's my understanding, too.
Okay. See, and the public hearing is open. We might as well take comment and.
Drew is here, and I think he would like to say if you were, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Steve.
Let's use the opportunity.
Drew, do you want to speak for the Conservation Commission?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
Good evening. Drew Key Faber, on behalf of the New Market Conservation Commission. So to provide a little more background on the lot line adjustment, when this particular mobile home was located, which Carl, I believe, was in nineteen eighty-four, is that correct? It was located such that it was approximately half on the Lot eighty-six, eighteen, which is here, and approximately half on Lot one nineteen. At that time, all of that property was owned by the Vitus. Through a series of transactions and a passage of time, in nineteen ninety-seven, Lot one nineteen was transferred to the town of New Market as a donation. The Conservation Commission has been stewardshiping, or, you know, been a steward of the property, and that's, that's why I'm standing here in front of you this evening. The Vitas are in the process of trying to sell the property to a cooperative of the mobile home owners. In the due diligence process, it was discovered that this mobile home is encroaching on Lot one nineteen. Now, one option is to try and move the mobile home, but the mobile home has been there since nineteen eighty-four. There's not a, there's not a compelling reason to do that. The second part is, when Lot one nineteen was transferred to the town, the town installed a gravel driveway to provide access to a parking area from which the public can walk and use Inherent Point Sanctuary. That gravel driveway was installed on Lot eighty-six, eighteen. In other words, the town installed gravel driveway is encroaching on.
Vitus property.
The Vitus property, right. So we have two encroachment issues that, in an ideal world, should be resolved in a way that is compatible for both. So that, that's from a big picture point of view. That, that's what we're trying to achieve. There are also some other somewhat related issues that are a result of history, if you will, or lack of compliance based on today's standards, that as long as we're trying to do this, we might as well try and do all of them and clean up everything to the, to the extent reasonably possible. So.
Makes sense.
Yes. Rather than, rather than, you know, coming back, blah, 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 just, just try and take care of it all at once. It does unfortunately delay the whole process. That's the, that's the downside. And adds expense, obviously.
And if this becomes, if this is a land swap, then ultimately the Town Council will have to approve it?
Absolutely.
We don't have the ability to do that.
Yes. And that's why the, the letter drafted from the Conservation Commission is to both the planning board and the Town Council.
Right. Okay, thank you, Drew.
Sure. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions?
I got one question.
Sure.
Now, going back and forth, I saw there's, there's been some survey worked on, and there's going to be some filing. Who would be responsible for those costs?
The Vitus have been paying those costs to date, yes. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Drew? Thank you, Drew.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any, the public hearing is open. Does anybody else have any comments? Carl, do you have anything you want to say? No?
I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay. No, that's fine. I'm, if you don't, if you're, I just want to make sure there's some things that need to be cleaned up and that everybody's on the same page, that you're trying to clean everything up. So when you come back in a month or two months, hopefully we'll have an agreement with everything and we'll be able to move forward. All right? That's your understanding?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so I heard in that process, I guess I should close the public hearing at seven twenty-six. I also, I thought I heard a request for a continuance to the June eleventh meeting. I entertain a motion for the continuance?
Make a motion to continue the application for a lot line adjustment requested by the Vida Family. I apologize for the last time. With the name Mike McMenman, I'm very conscious of spelling and mispronouncing. Family Real Estate Trust and Kathleen A. Zocke and Carl M. Vida, trustees in the town of New Market, eighteen Lamprey River Park, Inherent Point, Tax Map R2, Lot eighty-six dash eighteen, and nineteen, R2 zone. The proposal is for an equal area land swap of fifty-by-one-hundred-foot area.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. Thank you all. Next, moving right along, is a public hearing for an application for a lot line adjustment and subdivision requested by Anna Bronstein at Tugonet Drive, Tax Map R2, Lot twelve, and James Melvin Steubendorf Revocable Trust, Sixgonet Drive, Tax Map R2, Lot eleven-twenty-two, both lots located in the R1 zone. Proposal is to adjust the lot line such that point three-two-one acres is transferred from Lot eleven-twenty-two to Lot twelve, then Lot twelve will be subdivided into two residential lots. Before we start, again, I'd like to, if everybody's comfortable, I'd like to get a motion to accept the application as complete.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the application for the lot line adjustment and subdivision requested by Anna B. Bronstein at Tugonet Drive, Tax Map R2, Lot twelve, and James Melvin Steubendorf Revocable Trust at Sixgonet Drive, Tax Map R2, Lot eleven-twenty-two, both lots being located in the R1 zone, for the proposal to adjust the lot line such that point three-two-one acres is transferred from Lot eleven dash twenty-two to Lot twelve, then Lot twelve will be subdivided into two residential lots.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Diane, before we go too far, what do we do with Ms. Jane Ford? Is she an alternate now for this hearing, or is she sitting in because?
Val came back.
Right, Val came back, but Janice isn't here.
So you can appoint her as an alternate?
Right, that's what I'm saying. So do we appoint her as an alternate?
Yeah. If Janice arrives, then, yeah.
All right.
But if Janice arrives in the middle of a discussion, she doesn't understand, that doesn't make sense to me. So I would just.
Well, then she, it would be up to her to.
So why don't we just leave Jane as an alternate at this point? Yes, or put her, leave Jane as an alternate, because Janice should be here any minute?
And if she isn't, then at that point, you can decide.
Right, they could appoint her. Right, right.
Meanwhile, pay attention.
That's right. All right. So after that, the, the application was accepted, so I will open the public hearing at seven-thirty PM. Steve, do you want to go through this? Just give us, I like your color presentation. If you walk us through that, I think that'll answer a lot of questions, please.
What flag country is this?
Again, for the record, my name is Steve Micho from Doucet Survey. I'm representing Anna Bronstein and the Steubendorf Revocable Trust. Property is located at the corner of Dame Road and Gona Drive. There are currently two lots. The green lot is owned by Mrs. Bronstein, and the blue lot is owned by the Steubendorf Trust. As you can see, there is this long appendage that sits between a portion of the Bronsteins' property and Gona Drive. That is actually a result of the Bayfield subdivision that went in in the late nineties. This appendage at one time extended, I believe, all the way to Dame Road. There was a prior lot line adjustment that made it smaller and conveyed a portion of it to the Bronsteins', and now they're looking to create a more uniform lot on the Steubendorf's property, which will, as a result, give some additional frontage to the Bronsteins', then allowing them to subdivide into the green and the orange. The orange would be the new parcel. So you're looking at the existing configuration and the proposed configuration. In the proposed configuration, there will be one new house lot. The green lot will contain the Bronsteins' existing home. The blue lot will contain the Steubendorf's existing home, and the, the orange lot is, will be a vacant lot for the time being, upon which the Bronsteins are looking to construct a home sometime in the near future.
Great. And before we go too far, would you explain for the rest of the board members here that aren't, don't know the process, for a subdivision, New Hampshire DES has to approve it. Would you just walk through that process real quickly?
Sure.
So everybody will understand that?
For all lots that are less than five acres in size or have shore frontage, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has jurisdiction over subdivision. Primarily what they're looking at is that there is suitable area for a septic system on, on each new lot. So as a result, we have conducted test pits not only on the orange parcel, which would, will be a new residential lot, but also on the green to ensure that should the existing septic system on the Bronsteins' property fail. but also on the green to ensure that should the existing septic system on the Bronsteins' property fail, there's a suitable location for a replacement system in the future.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
So I just, I'm, so currently, the proposal is to share an existing leach field even after the new house is built?
No, if, if you're looking at our plan set, sheet two of two, the topographic sheet, contains the data pertinent to the existing and proposed septics.
So I see the potential well, okay, and...
There's a...
Oh, typical, okay, right, and that's what the soil boring, okay, all right, yes, thank you.
The circles are for the well radius, which is required, and then there's the, an area reserved for a septic system.
So what did you just say about the leach field? I misunderstood, I think, what you just said.
Department of Environmental Services has jurisdiction, has a subdivision approval process, which, which primarily is looking at the capacity of any lot to support a septic system.
Yes, and then, but I thought you said something about sharing the septic system, which was why I was confused.
No, each lot, it will have its own leaching system.
Oh, okay, then I just misheard you, and I apologize, okay.
There is an existing system on the Bronsteins' property in front of their home. Test pits were done to the rear of the lot in a, in a area that they didn't mind disturbing to satisfy DES requirements that a reserve system...
As the site of potential future septic leach field.
Correct.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, Val?
So as I understand it, if the approvals are granted, or as proposed, all the lots will meet the R1 zoning regulations, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm not sure if it's a planning board issue, but are there any covenants relative to subdividing lots within the Bayfield subdivision?
Not that I am aware of. The, the Bronsteins' property was not part of the Bayfield subdivision. That was in a budding tract at the time. The, certainly the Stubendorf's property was. As I mentioned, there was a prior lot line revision involving that property with a prior owner. And I don't believe any issues arose at that time regarding their limitation on doing so.
Anything else, Val?
So the, in the, the Bayfield subdivision was not an open space subdivision? Correct. Okay. But there was some open space, I believe, set aside as part of the negotiations. Those are my questions.
Anybody else have any questions? I have a question for Diane. I know in the package, I believe, there were letters to various town apartment heads. Have you heard anything? Or Steve, have you guys heard anything from Rick or about driveway?
Not regarding driveway, I did get an email a couple weeks ago from code enforcement requesting that the 4K areas be shown on the plan, but I believe that when they made that comment, they didn't realize there was a second sheet in the plan set.
Yeah, okay, right, okay. If we don't have any more questions, I guess I'll... There are a couple of things that, if we vote to approve this, that I think we should make as conditions. One, we should obviously condition it that the New Hampshire DES grants subdivision approval, because that, they kind of have jurisdiction anyways. Also, I'd like that plan to be stamped. Jamie Long did the wetlands. I know he stamped the report, but he didn't stamp the plan. Would you just make sure he stamps the plan also? And does anybody else have anything else that they'd like to see added or deleted? Go ahead, Diane.
Well, when I was looking at this topographic plan, I have this scale of it such that it was really difficult to follow the contours, and I didn't know if it maybe could be better labeled so that we can understand.
Sure.
I think I saw a couple of 60-foot con...
Yeah, there's no elevations.
But there's no elevation.
Only the 10-footers are currently labeled, but I, I saw after reading your comment that it does lead to some confusion.
That'd be helpful, thank you, Steve.
Sure.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Is everybody else comfortable with this?
I guess, I'm just curious, would, at this point, any schematic for potential siting of that house be necessary in terms of seeing that it would work or not on the lot, or is that immaterial?
That is immaterial. What DES looks at is they look at and make sure that the soil will handle the, a four-bedroom septic design.
Okay, but not exactly, but not worry about where the house would be located at this point, and then that would come up, it's later?
Building, that would just be for building permit, it would be that it meets applicable setbacks and...
And the people who are doing the subdividing take the risk that there isn't room to build a house there?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that issue will also be addressed when the time comes for a septic system design.
Okay.
And that's part of the reason why we want to see the 75-foot radius for the well, and also the 4,000-square-foot area for the septic system.
And we're looking at the topo, and we want to see soils, see if they're buildable soils.
The septic design with the state of New Hampshire, you, we'll have to show a, a box where a house is gonna go, or show a house, show grading.
Okay, and that's the next step?
Show the septic, show all that, that would be the next step.
So this is just really not showing where the prospective septic is, but in a, is a pre-proposed location for a, a conce, pre...
Yes, this is showing that it will, it will work.
Conceivably could work, just in terms of the soils, and that's it?
Right. Somebody could buy this lot and decide that that proposed septic area in the back, they could decide to put it in the front and dig new test pits and go to the state and say this works also, and it could be completely different, but at this point, it's just showing that it will work.
It will work there, but does not necessarily even work within the context of the house, because we don't know where that's gonna be, so that's just, okay, thanks.
Our regulations are such that in order to create a subdividable lot, you need to show the 4,000-square-foot septic area and a well with a radius protection of 75 feet, correct?
That's the state requirement, too, yes.
It's also the state.
Yes. Anybody have any other questions?
Certification of poorly, very poorly drained soils with stamp of wetland scientists on the plan, is that on there?
That, that's what I asked him to do.
One of my recommendations.
I asked him to have Jamie Long stamp that. All right, what's the preference of the board? We've had all our questions answered. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Did you open a public hearing?
Yeah, I did.
I don't think there's any public...
Oh, I should close the public hearing, huh?
Yeah, there wasn't any public hearing.
Yeah, close the public. Do you guys have anything to say?
What do we, chop?
You're welcome to speak if you'd like.
Come on up, you've got three minutes each.
Entertaining.
It's refreshing when people don't say anything sometimes.
Don't I know that? All right, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:40. Thank you, Val, for reminding me of that. Without any, anybody has any other questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Do you want to appoint Jane to vote as an alternate?
Good idea. Jane, you were hereby appointed to vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for lot line adjustment and subdivision requested by Anna B. Bronstein at Two Gonnit Drive, tax map R2 lot 12, and James and Melvin Stubendorf Revocable Trust at Six Gonnit Drive, tax map R2 lot 11-22, with both lots located in the R1 zone, to adjust the lot line such that .321 acres is transferred from lot 11-22 to lot 12 and the subsequent subdivision of lot 12 into the two residential lots as proposed. Subject to the applicant providing better labeling of contour lines on the plan, that the plan be stamped to cert, with the certification of poorly and very poorly drained soils by the wetland scientists, and that there'll be a note indicating the New Hampshire DES subdivision approval number to be added when the approval has been granted and prior to the signing by the planning board chair.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, signalize by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, seven, zero. Thank you, Steve. All right, onward and upward. Next on the agenda is new and old business versus chairman's report. A couple of things. First, I know I just received a memo from Matt Angel in reference, in regard to the impact fees. Has, I don't know if everybody, has everybody seen that?
No.
Okay.
It was in your packet?
It was in my packet, I picked up.
I had it, too.
Oh, oh, from, okay, yes, I, I didn't, I overlooked it.
It's actually pretty good. It shows that we don't have to refund much money in the next year or so in impact fees. So just at your leisure.
Could you pass those to the left, please? Send me to the right, please.
Or the other way.
The other way.
My other left?
I've turned around.
So that's interesting. The second thing I have is that there, we're trying to set up a...
Have a discussion?
Oh, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
This is still outstanding, the whole impact fee ordinance at the, at the town council level, particularly relative to the fact that the, our ordinance is out of date from a compliance standpoint of the, within the ordinance? Is there any update to that?
I'll have to get back to that, Valerie.
That's a good point, that never went anywhere.
Never went anywhere. It's been almost two years now?
It's been a year and a half.
Year and a half.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do next.
Well, perhaps as an alternative to completely doing away with them, we could make sure that they were tailored to the most effect.
Yeah, I think that was one of the discussions. It was changing the water and sewer.
Because I think our proposal was to, the planning board's recommendation... Was to end them, but instead, you know, if that isn't going anywhere, we might decide instead to revise them, so, just a thought.
Was the recommendation to rescind them all?
No. The recommendation was to move from, into system development charges for water and sewer.
Right.
And then to, if, if the town council wanted to... Our initial recommendation was we felt that the, the accounting and administrative...
Was burdensome.
Was burdensome on the town relative to the fees that were being collected and then given back. Those issues have been addressed, which was in our second report. But we still move forward with the recommendation to have the town council go to the system development charges, which affect all development as opposed to an impact fee basis. And then to revisit the recreational and the school section of the impact fees. And, and all those numbers need to be brought up to date.
So, so in some, we're suggesting that some change needs to be made one way, or the others are feeling as a planning board, but you may have to do it in a way that meets the council's needs by rethinking some of our proposals.
Well, either that or if the council decides they do not support any of the changes, we need to update our regulations regardless. If we're gonna keep them in effect, we're gonna, we have to update our...
Because they haven't been updated in over 10 years.
Yeah, I think the response is, the ball's in the, in the town council's court, and so the planning board shouldn't be doing anything until we hear from the town council.
But we can urge them with the, our intention of not having this stalled much further by staying in a court that isn't bouncing to, to be given, to have some response so we know what to do. And in terms of what we may decide to do, we want to do something. So if this isn't working, we, we want, we want recourse to make other, another change.
I will talk to the town administrator about possibly getting this on an agenda with the town council so they can vote.
So we can move forward one way or the other.
Affirmative or negative, one way or the other, move it one way or the other.
I would like to see the council vote relative to the, if they want to do anything with it.
Right.
To give the planning board a, what they're looking for out of this, as opposed to going through another process, because this was probably a six or eight-month process that the committee worked on.
Sure, sure.
To present to the council. I think we need, we need to understand what is it the council wants, other than just the update to meet the RSA's.
Right, I agree.
And the, and the money to fund it. Because a whole new, you have to go out and get the whole Matt Mayberry?
Bruce Mayberry.
Someone of his caliber has to go through and do a whole reassessment in order to update the actual impact fees. That's a whole analysis that they go through. So money needs to be also allocated by the council in order to do an update to the impact fee.
Well, I mean, and I think both the council and the planning board want to make sure that whatever we do is as effective as possible in terms of money for Newmarket in terms of costs generated by development. I mean, that's what we're talking about. So we, we want to update that and make it more efficient.
Correct. We need direction from the council, though, at this point.
Just a quick...
That tracks the money, absolutely.
It tracks the money, no, no.
Something we never had before.
The issue why we're out of compliance is because every, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, is it every 10 years?
Every 10 years.
Every 10 years.
To do a reevaluation.
Right, in order to determine what the actual impact fee should, is supposed to be.
Right.
Right.
What the rule should be.
Right.
What the number should be.
What the schedule should be, and what the improvement should be.
Oh, okay, what the actual impact is.
How we're targeting those funds.
What the new numbers should be.
In order to be in compliance...
In accordance with rising costs and so forth, too.
But also to be in compliance with the RSA.
Right.
See, we are not in compliance with the state law at this point in time.
Diane, you were gonna ask a question, Diane?
I'll tell her something next.
Okay. So I'll talk to the town administrator and see if he can at least open discussion with the council about revisiting that and, you know, giving us some direction on what, what they want to do. If they want to leave it the way it is, then we need to get money to update it and come in compliance. So if they want to change them, whatever, we need to, we need to get some direction. All right. Any other committee reports? Does anybody have any committee reports to report?
Elizabeth and I are gonna get together in the next couple of weeks to go over the landscaping changes, and we'll have a report at the June meeting, hopefully, Elizabeth.
Trees don't move quickly, so we're all right.
So I wanted to share that with you.
Okay.
I have one item.
Okay.
One of the past planning board meetings, I think it might have been in March, we were talking about work on updating the master plan, and the board asked me to put together a list...
Oh, yeah, of where we are.
Of all the chapters in our current master plan. And I've put together this, I guess you could call it a spreadsheet. And what it shows in, at the very top is the chapters that we currently have, and I've identified them by the chapter title. And in the state RSA, there's actually two chapters that are mandatory, and that is the land use section and the...
The future land use.
Well, the future land use is part of that, but the visioning statement. And the rest of the items are optional under the RSA. And some communities actually, you know, it's up to the town depending upon their particular needs, and some communities have adopted, for instance, a neighborhood plan chapter to their master plan, but it didn't really seem, in the past, it hasn't been that applicable to Newmarket, so we haven't included that. But I want, what I wanted to do is give you an overview of all the chapters that we have, all the chapters that could be included under the RSA's, and give you sort of a timeline on where we are with different pieces of it, and also the citation from the RSA, and...
Is this a 10-year revolving cycle?
Well, in theory, it's, you're supposed to update it every 10 years, and what we have tried to do is tackle at least one chapter per year. And in years, the last couple of years, our funding has been cut, and we haven't been able to keep on track, if you will.
Could future land use and visions, could vision statement somehow, since that is the, seems to be the burning coal here, because it's mandatory and it's way out of date, and it's also connected in a way with the future land use.
Yes, most definitely.
I don't wonder if there's a way that we could, to generate maybe some excitement and also involvement for the future land use, we could get some synergy going on between those two.
Mm-hmm. Well, we've certainly have talked about it several times, and I know the Economic Development Committee is working with a consultant, and there's gonna be some public meetings to help identify community goals with respect to economic development. And Val and I have talked about the possibility, Val's our representative on the Economic Development Committee. We talked about the possibility of maybe piggybacking, if you will, with that effort, and maybe we could have a broader...
Oh, the same thing I just suggested.
Yeah, a broader visioning that would include not only economic development, but land use... land use, future land use, since that's really gonna be one of the most critical areas.
And perhaps too, also the, some of the aspects that so far have been on the sidelines, like, well, you said the neighborhood plan potentially, or the New Market Tomorrow, those could all work also, perhaps.
Yeah, the issue is that we need to, or Diane needs to ask for money every year to get these done.
But, but maybe if we could sort of group some of these together, the, we might be more likely to get something funded. I don't know.
Can you explain more what community design, what that?
Well, that's a category that, and I put the New Market Tomorrow project, which was really a downtown-
Is it actually in our master plan?
It is part, it's referenced in the current master plan, and it was sort of a prelude to the downtown revitalization program that the town was involved with in the early, well, in 1990 and later. And so it, the community design really falls into that category. And the New Market Tomorrow, which, which made recommendations for the streetscape improvements and public amenities in the downtown, and there was several parties involved, I think Cynthia Copeland from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission was involved in some of these earlier planning efforts. But it really laid the foundation and the groundwork for our downtown project. But it's more of an, the community design talks about, you know, more urban design features on a specific scale rather than a community scale.
So-
So let's say if we wanted to do a gateway project for the golf course, or for the northern, you know, boundary of, of New Market, something along those lines might fall under the category of community design.
And, and also, our building inspectors, name escapes me at the moment.
Mike Hoffman.
Mike Hoffman had, I thought, had some nice ideas for having some kind of signage design, that, that potentially might be something that could be under-
That could be under community design, certainly.
And that could work within the, within the visioning. I'm trying to think of something that would perhaps generate some, you know, public involvement, public interest, and maybe if we could highlight some, some things that we feel would be tangible for the public at large, they might want to participate.
Can you explain more of what the vision statement section and-
What it is?
Or what it's, is it, is it encompassing the overview of the master plan?
And what the community views as issues that need to be addressed by the master plan, a vision for the future.
For all, for all chapters.
For all chapters, it's supposed to, it should really be, you know, very broad. But there's a number of planning techniques that can be utilized to develop a vision statement, including, you know, having, Design Charette is an example, which is more specific, I know, but there's, we've talked several times about possibly having the folks at the Cooperative Extension at UNH, Charlie French is a part of that program, and he has worked with communities on visioning, and at one point we had talked to him about having some kind of a citizen forum where we could bring the public together and, and do some brainstorming and come up with some ideas that really would help to lay the framework, if you will, for the, the goals, community goals, and that would be the, you know, would be upon which the master plan would be based.
Okay, and also because I understand that the town council right now is reviewing town-owned lands and what to maybe resolve, some different parcels of lands and how those might be used or not used, or sold off, or whatever, and maybe there could be some connection with those properties, for example, in the visioning, what is, where is New Market going? What, what do we want to do, for example, with some of these isolated properties? And that could maybe be part of this process. I'm just, I'm trying to make some ideas for some concrete advancement in terms of these, these different themes, but also tie it to some real steps that might be more, again, appealing or, or realizable to people, obtainable. Just a thought.
Yeah.
But that's a good thought. I think my comment would be relative to timing. It would seem that we would need to get some of these chapters updated in order to have that information, so that, like, for instance, in the housing chapter now, it's so out of date and so disconnected to what happened through the New Market Tomorrow. I mean, they're at odds with each other.
And I think one of the things with this proposed M2 zoning change, a lot of people have taken chapter five.
Right, which is just so out of date.
Oriented by verse.
Which is so out of date.
Which is 2001.
Right, right. So I would think that we'd want to get some of those critical chapters updated to reflect what we really, when we look at that, you have housing, we have transportation, community facilities, our culture and historic resources, that probably wouldn't be big projects, or could be some of it combined. And then that way we know where, at least we are, and how, then how the whole visioning would change based upon the input of people knowing, okay, this is where we are, this is, this is really the information, just like we saw with the land use chapter.
Well, we just, well, I was gonna say, actually, we, since we did just do that, that land use chapter can be a reference for some of the things we just talked about. I mean, that land use chapter does tell us the lay of the land, so to speak, and what's where and how it's being used, so let's, let's use all that work and might not start with that.
The issue is always funding.
Yeah, and we just funded that, so let's maybe see how that goes, and maybe use that as a, make sure that, potentially, since we just did it. And, 'cause that does discuss relevant issues like types of housing, you know, you know, different levels of housing.
Dan, what's it cost? It's cost like six to $10,000 a chapter to update it?
Probably more than that.
More than that now?
You know, the, the economic development chapter, we had $10,000 available.
That's what I thought, okay.
And we used that, you know, to have a ghostwriter, basically, somebody who worked with us and put the report together, and, but a lot of the research was done in-house. I was, you know, involved with doing a lot of the, the research and put the first draft together, and did the final editing. So, you know, $10,000 is sort of a minimum per chapter.
Well, what I'd like-
Just an example, that's, the city of, town of Merrimack recently updated theirs, and it was a $150,000 project to do the entire master plan update.
Okay, we can just copy this.
Yeah.
Well, let's all just move there.
But I mean, I just wanted to inject some optimism to the process, I mean, it's very labor intensive.
But Diane, why don't, why don't we do this, though? An attempt to try to at least move some of these forward, is, I would throw out there that maybe you could give us as a planning board, a recommendation for what chapters we should tackle next, chapter or chapters next, what, what you think is more important and needs to be worked on, you know, prioritize it, and if we have something in front of us, then, and we could take a vote to set it, send it to the town council to request funds.
Right. And a lot of it in the past has been driven by what's available for funding. For instance, you know, we, we did an update to the open space and conservation plan, 'cause there was money available through the estuaries program to do that. Most recently, the land use chapter, there was money available through the coastal program.
Right.
Is there typically money available for the transportation chapters?
There might be money available, although a lot of the, the planning money-
Yeah.
-has been drying up.
Right.
But there could possibly be some money in the Stratford Regional Planning Commission could assist with that.
And are there other entities beyond Stratford Regional Planning that towns go out and employ to actually develop their chapters?
Oh, there's engineering companies that do that.
We hire, they're planning consultants who do that kind of work.
People from UNH?
Not for free.
They can assist, they don't do it for free. But, yes.
Companies like VHB do a lot of towns-
VHB was who-
Do master planning and all that stuff, you know.
And they did the entire.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, and all that commercial.
Are there any interns available for a lot of the SCUD work?
Somebody's gonna manage the project and coordinate it, and I, you know, I've written master plans as a consultant working-
Are you volunteering?
No, I just wanna just say that it's very labor intensive, and it's very difficult for a staff person working full-time, doing what I do, to take on a project of that nature, because it's just too extensive. And it's also, you, yeah, you can get interns who can assist with it.
Yeah, but sometimes, you know, you get what you pay for, too.
Right, well, I think-
There's no, so, go ahead.
We, as a planning board, under the RSAs, are responsible to update the town's master plan, correct?
Yes.
In, in whatever chapters. We also have the right to submit to the, oh, in this instance, the town council for funding, whether or not they approve it, but I think it would be good to have, to at least get a process going where we get estimates on updating the various chapters, you know, maybe it's from Stratford Regional Planning, and then at least to be able to submit those to the budget committees so that annually, people, the voters understand that X number of dollars is going into the budget in order to keep the master plan continually updated on a 10-year basis.
Right, in conformance with the regulations.
Exactly.
I agree, I mean, I think that we should start with having-
Well, the mandatory one, to me, seems to make more sense.
Yeah, but I mean, I think we need to start with, you know, Diane, when you have the time to prioritize these, and then we can talk, and then we can start looking for what, what they're gonna cost and all that.
And it may be that we want to take some of these chapters out of the master plan and, and/or reintroduce, well, these, these chapter names are really the ones that are available for us to adopt, correct?
It, it says that you have, you know, it's, it identifies in the RSA those sections that are mandatory.
Right.
And then it lists all these others that are optional.
Right, so we may want to-
And it's up to the community to decide what's important.
Right.
Given their particular needs and their, the direction that they're heading in.
So there's only three mandatory chapters.
We have a master-
Land use, future land use.
Yeah.
And vision statement, out of the whole ballywick, those are the three mandatory ones.
Right, and you, so you could have three chapters in your master plan as a community.
Cover as much as we think's important, particularly have sub-chapters in there.
Well, you could have three chapters to make up the, the master plan, and then all the regulations are supposed to be driven by those three chapters.
Yep.
As opposed to 10-plus chapters.
So we might be able to, I mean, I think that's an interesting idea to see if, how, how we could cull some or reconfigure others to make it less financially daunting, you know, so I, I, sort of intuitively, I like the idea of maybe cutting it down to seven or six or something, and, I don't know.
Why don't we have Diane come back with a, when she has a chance, come back with, you know, a-
A list of priorities.
That's a great idea.
You know, I mean, I think that's what we need to do, and then we'll, we'll talk about it again when we have the information, and then we'll talk about getting money attached to them and try to find it.
The budget committee is starting to meet, and we need to be organized.
It's also not a priority of the council, you know, it's not gonna be-
It's unfortunate, 'cause every year we've put in a request, and the last two we haven't gotten funding.
Right.
Maybe lean and mean.
And we don't have a, we don't have a right, we don't have a right for the, to the money through the RSA. We only have the right to submit-
Ask for it, right.
The money in order to do the update.
Right. If we could tax them ourselves, would be a great solution.
So, no, I think, but I think that, I think it's also good that Diane brought this up, because as Val has been alluding to, this is our, this is our bible, so to speak, right?
Our blueprint for the future.
Well, then, no, the master plan's based on, well, a lot of our decisions are based on trying to make sure that our decisions are in compliance with our master plan.
Right.
In spirit, I think that's, right? That's my understanding.
Yeah, our regulations are supposed to reflect what's in the master plan.
So I think we-
And then, and I think the zoning board really has to rely on it when they make their decisions, is that correct? 'Cause it's about the purpose and intent of-
So we want to make it, yeah, as relevant as possible.
Absolutely. Janice, now that you're here, does anybody have anything else to add?
No.
I want to take a motion.
A quick vote on that topic we've been talking about for an hour and four minutes.
I would just like to, for the record, mention that Diane's memo relative to her planner's comments was extremely helpful in preparing for the meeting.
I agree.
So, and the timeliness of getting them to us, I think that's great.
Well, I'm experimenting with different models, and I think-
And you had some new things.
In the past, I would put together, you know, a fairly detailed narrative, and it was very time-consuming to do that. If you're happy with something as simple, it's just, you know, identifying what the actions would be and the recommendations that would, I would be able to handle that.
I think that was great.
Because also you're-
But to do a detailed report on each and every project, I don't have the time to do that.
Well, we have to do some of our own homework, also, I mean, 'cause I like the idea that this is your, I mean, we're using your expertise to help with our thoughts, but we also have the facts in front of us if we, if we want to go deeper, and I think that's a good combination.
I agree, that's a good point, Val, very good point.
And I think we can streamline if we keep it simple, and keep it to maybe two or three pages maximum, which is bullet points, as opposed to more formal writing and so forth. I'm happy to do that.
Anybody's always welcome to go into your office and go through the whole file if they want to.
That's right.
They don't think they have enough information, so.
Yep.
All right. Anybody have anything else? Janice, it's up to you.
This is your job.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. This is a very good meeting. Nice job.
Thank you for doing this. Except for these.
Except for the ones that are mandatory.
Yeah. That's why I was kind of thinking, let's think about this and then-
Just keep it, because-
Cost the town less if you have, you know, five.
Six-page checklist.
Yeah, I, I do the checklist. And I have highlights.
No, but they're important, yes.
And I'll just try to keep it brief, so.
Right, because what you're bringing to our attention is just what is missing.
Right.
I mean, we're relying on you as the planner to go through the checklist.
Or it could be a sub-paragraph within a bigger theme.
So then we can kind of look at that.
Part of the problem is, a lot of the issues come out in the first place.
Right. On something maybe-
Oh, I'm saying just the regulatory issues, not the, you know, what's missing, what's, what doesn't meet our regulations.
Right.
You know, so that, and then-
Everything else is open to discussion.
Right, because the planning board should be dealing with-
Next one's, yeah, and Diane's gonna give us some direction on which chapter we should point to next. As people- To some extent, I thought, the way that they were redeveloped was how old they were.
I thought that was-
So the older chapters are recycled.
Kind of based, based on that.
Yeah.
Partly because of that.
There's so many. Should we turn this off?
No, no.
They're supposed to, they should be discussed. Who's they, the people downstairs fielding us? Do, I can just turn, oh, do you want me to turn this? All right, so just, yes, so there's, we can choose, but it's, it also, I think in the past-
We're still on the air, is what I'm trying to say.
Those that were, those that were done furthest away are next up, but I'm not sure it necessarily has to be that way.
But then there's a certain-
Sure, but that's okay. I mean, we're just discussing the, the update process.
Factual information, not opinionated information.
Oh, no, no, well, I think that's, it's, it's a part of our, thank you. All right, I'm just gonna turn this off.